Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular meeting of the School Committee of the Town of Foxborough. It's January 8th, 2018. Happy New Year. Tonight, we have a relatively shorter agenda. They aren't all like this, as you know. We're going to recognize any visitors. We're going to approve some minutes from our last meeting. We're then going to give our new superintendent, Dr. Bertos, and our new assistant superintendent, Mrs. Mello, an opportunity to say hello and welcome to the district. We all know you, but I thought it was appropriate to give you a chance to say anything you'd like to say. Your first official presiding meeting. And then we have a teaching and learning highlight from Ms. Arkatcha and team of students. We're going to then continue our discussion of the FY19 budget, which, of course, we're in the primary budget season right now. Dr. Bertos and Mr. Yukna. Mr. Yukna will give us our first discussion of the Capital Improvement Plan draft for FY19. We have a couple of donations to accept, and we have a third one, actually, just received today that Janet, being right on top of things, was able to distribute to us. So we will cover that one as well, and then we'll take up any other matters. So, to begin, any visitors who want to be heard? Seeing none, we'll take up our minutes. These are the regular meeting minutes of December 18th. I know Janet distributed a new copy tonight to everybody. Janet, what were the changes? Just minor, I know you said.
Yeah, no content changes, a name correction and just a dot instead of a hyphen.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments from anybody?
I had no change.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Thanks, Chris.
I will second.
Go ahead. I will second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor? Five-zero, thank you. I just want to make a quick comment on, I'm going to use the minutes as an excuse, but one of the things that we covered at the last meeting that is covered in the minutes is a, obviously, the big award from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Their outstanding school partner, Foxborough Cable Access. We had a wonderful presentation that night, and I made an omission that I should have thought of then, but I'm going to fix it now, which was I made several thanks during our presentation, and I thanked Mike Everson, who once again is in the back room tonight running the cable for us, and I failed to thank Frank McDow, who was in that room for a number of meetings before Mike was. Covers, covered a lot of the selectmen's meetings, covered a lot of our meetings. And Frank was probably watching, and Frank, if you were, I hope you will accept my apology, but I want to thank personally Frank McDow for his many meetings of service when he's been in the back room running the cameras and the cable and all that good stuff as well. So Frank, thank you. Okay. Dr. Bertos. Dr. Bertos.
What do you make?
I think we've had a great transition already to our new superintendent and our new assistant superintendent. If anyone has had their head in the sand for the last several months, they should be reminded that you both have a long history with Foxborough Schools. This is a seamless transition for us. We're very fortunate. And I know on behalf of the committee, we want to welcome you to the table.
Thank you.
Allison, for the first time at this side of the table, you're a frequent guest at that end of the table.
Indeed.
But I just thought you might like to say hello and give you a chance to say anything on your mind. Maybe the school district goals, continuing the goals, and progress, or anything else you guys would like to share.
Sure. Well, one of the things, I had someone ask me recently, and it was the question about goals and for the new year, as most people are thinking with the calendar year, that what are your new goals? And I think that's one of the things, that's a beautiful thing with our situation, actually, right now, is we think about the school year, not so much the calendar year. And so when January rolls around, we are in full swing of implementing our goals. And I think that not losing the momentum and being able to know all of the players, if you will, one of the things that Allison and I were talking about earlier today was we might be in new roles, but if we have questions based on our new roles, we know who the people are, and we know where to go to ask the questions. And that really helps in not losing the momentum and being able to dive right into the new role. At the same time, we're finding that with her position not being filled, we're in the process of that, but really, again, the strength of our team and working together and letting everyone in our team know that we're not going to miss a step because we're going to work together and make sure that all of the goals, the district goals that we have laid out, that we're able to continue to do what's best for kids and hopefully not miss any steps and not have any more blizzards. Because usually, January is the time when you really, the momentum's going, and you jump right back in in the classrooms, and you get so much accomplished, starting in January and moving forward. So I think that's one of the great things, is being able to work with our people that are in place. And everyone's been so supportive and really saying whatever you need to help us in however, whatever capacity we need to. So it's exciting. We're looking forward to some of the things, like with the Borough Project that's coming up, the Technology Plan. We're at Technology Steering Committee today, and really kind of fleshing out the rest of that draft to bring to you at the next meeting and what that looks like. And really talking about how it meets all of our district goals and the strategic plan goals. It mirrors it so much, and I think that, I mean, Allison can talk to that, where she was new to that today, but it really does mirror nicely and shows what we're all working on and that even professional development, everything aligns really well. So it's nice having us in the district and that we've had the history together because you can see how those dots connect.
For me today, it was my first time at Tech Steering Committee. It was one of the few committees that I haven't participated on in the past. And it was just in one day, talking about connecting the dots, having been a longstanding member of the Professional Development Committee, just to see how much that committee informs the work we do on the Professional Development Committee and having relationships with all but one person at the table, who I didn't really know that works at the high school, that I got to meet, which was great. There was no time lost getting, I thought I was really going to have to sit and get up to speed, but I'm familiar with so many of the initiatives, and we have such great communication between all of us. So that was exciting, actually, to add. I mean, who really, you think, oh, another committee, but I really enjoyed it because it was a little missing piece of the puzzle, even though I'm well informed, actually being there as part of the discussion was fantastic. It's interesting that we haven't filled my position yet because I'm still maintaining the responsibilities of that role right now and trying at the same time to transition into some of the, only some of the things that Amy's doing right now because she's helping me. So that's, because we have this great relationship, is really helpful as well. And I think it's given the teachers, at least they've told me, a sense of calm, that it's not this major transition all at once, that they're not going to feel a huge change right now. We might feel it, but that's okay. It's our job to keep it from them. So this is a very exciting time, and I'm, this is very strange to be sitting here.
And for me to be on the other side of the table.
And Debbie's on the couch, probably.
Yes, watching. I'm sure she's watching.
With a kitty on her lap.
Yes. So thank you for the warm welcome. I appreciate it.
It is a warm welcome. We're really glad to have both of you here. We're fortunate.
Thank you.
And if Debbie is watching, she's smiling.
She is smiling.
For two reasons. Number one, she's not here. But number two, I know she's proud of both of you. And I hope, you know, I hope the Texans are proud of Dr. Bertos achieving superintendent. I think that's an honor, well-earned. You do a great job. We know that.
Thank you. It's exciting. And speaking of Debbie, we've both been proteges, if you will, and had her as a mentor over the years and so many other, whether it's principals or directors, and you really learn something from everyone. Everyone has something different to offer, and it's a matter of listening and hearing what that is. And it makes a difference in the way you approach things, and I think that it makes our relationship stronger because we know that we can go to anyone and have those questions answered, or to have someone really stretch your thinking about something, too. And so I think it's a good time to really have those conversations and to think about, she's going to look at things that I've been doing for the last seven years with new eyes, which is great because she's going to ask questions that maybe I didn't think of. And so we'll learn with each other and continue to move the district forward.
Anyone from the committee want to make any comments?
Well, I want to thank you two ladies very, very much for helping create the wonderful send-off that we all celebrated with Debbie last Friday night. You were very instrumental in how beautiful it was and how smoothly it ran. And it was ever so clever passing the baton.
It wasn't it? That's all you.
That was, yes. Par excellence.
I think one of the things that truly came out that night was the outpouring of what Debbie has done for the district and how it's appreciated, and all of the people that are involved, you could see by the outpouring of people that were there. There was a large attendance, which was great to see, but thank you.
I will echo that, and I will point out that, as was discussed Friday night, Debbie's tenure started with a hurricane, and yours has started with a blizzard. So there's continuity. There's even more continuity there. But I'm confident that there are very good, putting the weather aside, there are very good things to come with the two of you at the helm, so.
I think we've said all along, it's a great place to be, so it's exciting to take on a new chapter.
Definitely.
I'd like to welcome you both. I've worked with both of you many, many times. I've sent you since the beginning and you since back in the Aharn days and continue. I'm really excited to see what you guys bring to the table. I'm, nothing will shock me. You guys are incredible.
Thank you.
I'll just close this part of the agenda then by saying, from my own perspective, that we will miss Debbie. She provided tremendous service to the town, and we spoke about that on Friday night. But, you know, just looking forward, I can't think of two more intelligent women to run this district. Professional, Amy is a word I would use, Allison, to describe both of you. And just really, you know, creative and thoughtful. And from my perspective, those are all great attributes that we'll benefit from in terms of your leadership. So we do look forward to new perspectives, new ideas, and yet continuity of all the good stuff that's been going on. So welcome.
Thank you.
Officially, again.
Thank you.
Okay, would you like to introduce the teaching and learning highlight?
I would love to. So excited to have Ms. Kelly Arkatcha along with many juniors from Foxborough High School. I'll have them introduce themselves here in a minute. But what I'd like to point out first, as far as this teaching and learning highlight, when we talk about what are our goals and what our plan is going forward, I think that what you're going to hear through this teaching and learning highlight is a great example of taking what our district goals and the strategic plan goals, what it looks like out in classrooms and in schools. They're going to be talking about some work that they've done with students in the Ukraine and how they have reached out to them and learned from them and the Ukrainian students learning from our students. But what I'd like to do is just take a minute to go back to our strategic plan. So when we think about our strategic plan, the first objective, which is to develop responsible global citizens and provide dynamic learning experiences within a rigorous curriculum that fosters high levels of achievement for all students. The third goal under that objective is to provide curricular opportunities and programs that inspire global awareness and build cultural competencies. So what you're going to hear this evening from these fantastic Foxborough High School students that are so creative is how they're meeting that goal. And it's a, what Ms. Arkatcha has done is it's a way of teachers and department heads really taking this document and seeing it as a living document. How do we in the classroom meet these goals? When we look at the strategies of increasing opportunities for students to really create and participate in learning experiences which will build their own cultural competencies. This evening is going to be a great example of what you're going to hear. And I would like to invite Ms. Arkatcha up along with our students, and I'll have them introduce themselves a little bit more and tell you exactly what they've done, which is very exciting. I also had the opportunity, as they're moving up, to sit in when they talk about one of the experiences with their work. It's exciting to see the collaboration and the critiquing that they're able to do with each other and one of the projects that you're going to hear about. So I know that they'll expand on it, but it really is a wonderful example of how we are stretching beyond Foxborough.
So thank you so much for having us here. We're very excited to be here. I'll let them introduce themselves. So, you want to start, Nick?
I'm Nick. I'm a junior.
My name is Seamus Sullivan, and I'm also a junior.
I'm Megan, and I'm also a junior.
I'm Emma, and I'm also a junior.
I'm Caroline, and I'm a junior as well.
Oh, great. We have them for another year. Excellent.
So all of these students are members of the Senior Inc. class, which means they're at our most advanced level of graphic design students. So I can give you a little bit of background of this project, and then I'm going to let them take it away from there. So the way this came about, Dr. Bertos was talking about goals and implementing goals, and I was very much aware that at the high school and in the district, we're looking to promote global citizenship. So I, you know, put a couple of feelers out to different organizations. One of them I put out to was the Peace Corps, and the Peace Corps runs a program called Worldwide Schools. Worldwide Schools connects US classrooms with Peace Corps volunteers in different parts of the world. So I went onto their website. I gave a little brief summary of what we do in Senior Inc. I said, is anybody interested in their community, either for a branding identity project or for iconography, anything that can help out the communities. We waited for about a month, and then in September, I got a letter back from Madison Underwood, who is originally from Pennsylvania, but now is a Peace Corps volunteer in the Ukraine. She works with high school students in the Ukraine, and in the Ukraine, that's ninth grade through 11th grade. And she said that they were writing a grant at this time to create a youth center in the Ukraine, and they were looking for some identity and branding help with that. So that's where our students came in. So I can talk to you about, just a little bit about Senior Inc. And how we take big problems like this. So what we do is I'll bring the project to the students. The Senior Inc. class, the curriculum, is very different every single year. We get different clients. And again, this year, I wanted to branch out to a global client base, so having the students empathize with a completely different target audience where they might not speak the same language, they have a completely different culture than these students do. So the way we handle big projects like this and big just challenges is through design thinking. Design thinking has been around since about the 60s, but it's become big recently through IDEA, who works with different companies where they use creativities to solve difficult challenges. So they start with empathizing with the target audience, then defining what the challenge is, coming up with sketches, so they're brainstorming, then coming up with a final based on those sketches. They send that final to the clients, and then they get reviews back from the clients, and they keep going from there. So it's a whole different cycle that they use to solve problems.
I like the word IDEA. No word for me. This is good.
So this project was really different for us. Most of our projects and clientele, like our clientele base, is pretty much local. If it's not Foxborough, it's not far from Foxborough. So we know our audience pretty well. Most of the time, it's our peers, it's our fellow students. So this time, we had to really research our target audience because in order to provide a good product, we have to understand them. So initially, right off the bat, we decided we had to learn more about Ukraine as a whole and kind of like where they were politically. So initially, we researched that a little bit, and then as a group, we all got together and we brainstormed two lists of questions. One about the logo and what they wanted, what they wanted to be incorporated within it for the youth center. And then another one, just about their personalities and like their interests, so we could get to know them on a more personal level because we needed to form some sort of relationship with them. So that's how we got to know our target audience.
As an idea, to get to know them better and to get to know what they do on a daily basis, I shot an idea out as to make a video about our day in the life so they can see what we do at school, and in return, we can see what they do. So at first, they sent us a video. We watched it. And then we got together as a group, and we decided what we were going to record after asking the teachers for permission. And we basically recorded everything we did at a day at FHS. And then that was my part of the whole project, was to edit this video and get it done. And then we sent it out to them, and it was just cool to see what they do and how different their world is compared to ours.
How many of you are on this team, the five of you, or are there more?
There's more of us.
There's nine in all?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So in order to come up with a design for the youth center in Rami, we first split up into groups so we could work with people in our design team. And in those groups, we used the notes that the Rami school provided for us. Like, for example, what they wanted to see included in the logo, like the colors, which were blue and gold, and they wanted to see their Ukrainian symbol as well included in the logo. And we were designing for their youth center, which is to be used for ecology purposes. So they wanted to see, like, maybe if there'd be a way to include ecology stuff into the logo as well. And then, once we were finished, like, doing our logo, we ended up, like, sending off logo to them in a PowerPoint. And, yeah, and in addition to, when we were brainstorming, we did a lot of sketches so we could get, like, a lot of ideas, and then our classmates could give feedback as well so we could kind of figure out, like, what we wanted to use in logos and stuff.
So these are just some of our logo options, some of the ones we came up with. So we have the logo, and then we also provided what it would look like on certain, like, stationery and notebooks so they get a visual on how it would print. So these are some of our, some of the designs we came up with. Each one, each group, we worked in partners, and each group came up with very different takes on how they incorporated all the aspects that the Ukrainians requested. Came up really nice. And then finally, Bryn Gilbert and I, we drafted a letter and an email to send to the Ukrainian students, along with all of our logos and branding options. But the drafts we sent, they're only first drafts. So we're basically waiting for a reply and revisions we can make. So once we get that back, all the teams, like all our groups, will go back and make all the revisions necessary, and we'll send out another draft and see what we get back from that. So it's a process.
And one of, sorry. One of the other, why don't you talk a little bit, too, about as far as the criteria with the technology that you were using and what you had to think about when you were designing the logos?
Yeah, so here at Foxborough, we have really advanced technology when it comes to graphic design. We're really fortunate. And one of the major points that they made in their request was they needed to be able to redraw the logo. So with that, like, in mind, we had to keep our designs really simplistic. So we had to use basic shapes and basic fonts in order to keep it simple and not overcomplicate it. That way, they could reprint it and hand draw it for, like, posters or marketing purposes because they don't have access to the technology that we have. So that was a major component we had to keep in mind.
Chris, what were you going to say?
That was kind of what I was going to ask. I would add one other part to it. Is there another step, once they choose the logo that they like? Is there a second part to it, or do they choose the logo, they're happy, and it goes from there? Is there any more branding for them that you'll be doing?
Well, we don't know yet. So that's the fun part, is this whole collaboration. It's kind of like an evolving project. I mean, even Seamus's idea for the videos, which was awesome, and now they're talking about having a conversation back and forth. So let's have another question and then answer through videos back and forth. So it's all just been evolving. So we've talked about, we are going to send them, obviously, the logo as a file that they can use on anything for promotion. But we've also talked about doing, like, video work or doing advertising work for them, so whatever they need help with in promoting the youth center.
And one of our mid, because for our midterm, we have two option assignments. Both involve pitching one of our projects. So one group in the class is working on a pitch for the youth center. So for some reason, they needed to use that. They always have access to that project we're doing.
That's great. Is that the end of your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so we can ask you more questions then? Deana?
Well, I, it's more of a comment. I'm glad I don't have to choose because all of the logos look really good to me, so I'm glad I don't have to decide which one to pick because they're all fantastic. And my second comment I wanted to say is I'm thinking back to six years ago when we did not this current strategic plan, but the one preceding it. And we were just starting to talk about global connections, and it was really hard to call out, you know, what is that and how is it going to play out? And I think this is exactly what we envisioned without knowing that that's what we wanted, but this is just great and amazing and such a wonderful thing that you would go and look for the connection, and then your students would just take the ball and run with it. It's fantastic. It's really impressive, you guys. And, you know, I think it's, it is. It's precisely what this, it's what the strategic plan before this envisioned and what this plan is focused on and headed, heading towards. And it's just great to see it in practice, so thank you.
And there's been some things that we haven't even, I didn't even expect, like the, a lot of them are Instagram friends now with a bunch of the students in the Ukraine.
So their English must be pretty good.
Yeah. We were, like, all pretty impressed with their, like, because we see it in the videos and, like, conversations between us, like, because we are, like, social media friends now. So we've all talked, like, we've had conversations, and it's really impressive, their English.
Yeah, they're definitely really talented at speaking, like, other languages. I think it's such a big part of their culture to learn other languages, so, yeah, they're really good at it.
Geographically, the US is pretty isolated. And if it weren't for a few immigrants coming in, we wouldn't know other languages or even be aware of them. And over there, languages are all around. You know, you go and buy a DVD, and you have a possibility of 17 different languages you can listen to it on. It's just part of their world.
Yes.
Yeah, please.
I was wondering what surprised you most about the day in the life of a Ukrainian student versus a day in the life of a...
I'll take a guess.
It was crazy to see how, like, not colorful their school was. It was really, like, I would almost say depressing, like.
Very cold.
Yeah, just very cold feeling.
It looked like it from the pictures, the way it was all, it looked very institutional.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, also, too, they don't go to lunch. They usually just, like, grab, I think, yeah, coffee in the morning, like, in the cafeteria. And then the rest of the day, I think that they just, like, have snacks and stuff to keep them filled up, and then they go home.
How long of a day?
Yeah. When do they go, when do they start and go home?
We only found out that it was, like, eight classes a day.
Right. And they go to school, I believe, on Saturdays as well.
Yeah.
So it's, they go to school a lot there.
Do they go year-round?
No.
No.
But like, one of the things we talked about was how they wanted to know how we, like, prepared for, like, big exams, like midterms and finals and stuff. So like, we were saying how on midterms and final days, we have half-days. They go to school on weekends to prepare for theirs, but we have half-days. So it's just like the crazy, like, contrast.
Yeah, definitely.
So when do they start in the morning and when do they go home?
I'm not sure.
Oh, you better ask that the next time. Your school committee is very interested.
But the time difference has been big, too, and they're trying to text them. They have to calculate what time it is.
Seven, they're seven hours ahead. Yeah, so that's definitely a factor in our communication.
So in third grade, when you learn to lapse time, see it's coming in. Are you reverting back, Allison?
So is it safe to say that you guys know a little bit more about Ukraine than you did prior to this project?
For sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good.
I want to piggyback on what you said about the technology from that first one, not the last one, the one before. And I'm very familiar with the art department and Kelly Arkatcha, and I just have to say it over and over again, we've always been known for our music department. Now we are known for our art department, and I've watched it grow incredibly under your direction. And this is just so impressive, and it does cover the global citizenship that we've been struggling for. We've been struggling to figure out what the fit is for this, and this is just the beginning. I can just, there's endless possibilities with this. This is so impressive. You guys are learning from this in so many different ways other than art. So I love the collaboration.
Yeah, I'm definitely, I'm grateful that we're able to learn about, like, different cultures and stuff, just through art.
It's pretty neat.
Yeah.
Well, we're going to be discussing our Capital Improvement Plan request as well, and this is just a perfect example of why we keep, you know, we're putting money into our technology for our students. And it's just one other awesome way we're using our educational technology and keeping it, you know, updated and improved throughout. Thanks for the example. It's fantastic.
Very impressive.
It's also crazy, I'm dating myself, but, you know, I'm just thinking about the world, the global situation and the world situation. I was going to high school. We were in the middle of the Cold War. It was, I mean, never mind the technology, but collaborating with the Ukrainian, or Soviet, that was the Soviet Union then, was just unthinkable. So it's just such a different world, and it's just wonderful to see you guys being able... So it's just such a different world and it's just wonderful to see you guys being able to, I mean, I was in college when the Berlin Wall fell and all that. So it's uh, this is awesome. I'm not being eloquent, but it's awesome. Thank you so much.
Just may I add one other piece too?
Sure.
I had the opportunity to sit with them when they were critiquing each other's logos and the critical feedback that they give to each other. Talk about a skill to be able to provide that feedback, to be able to take that feedback and to really then implement and apply what you've learned from your peers is a really important skill that they're going to have going forward, no matter what they end up studying and doing going forward. So there's, as you were saying, Kelly, there's so many other pieces here. It's, there's so much that's really embedded in a project like this.
Absolutely.
That's true. Usually critiquing doesn't start, if, if you were to say in the art field, it starts in the college level. So you guys are gonna be nice and strong if you continue forward in this, in this um field.
Yeah, they've been critiquing since freshman.
That's, that's unheard of. Since when? You know that. You know from your background that that's, you don't start from your talent.
But that's also teaching you how to observe. Very careful.
And see what works and what doesn't work. Very, very impressive.
Anything else? Thank you guys for coming in and sharing your experience. And Kelly, great job initiating it.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you.
As for Donna.
Everybody can leave except Seamus who has to stay for the entire meeting.
That's great. That's amazing. I'm so impressed.
Got to watch the video as well that they had with the students that sent over. And after they watched the video of each other, then they had more questions. The lunch was one of the questions that came up. They wanted to know more about lunch that our students had. And our students were fascinated by them not having lunch.
Plenty of coffee.
It's possible that our students seemed more appreciative of the opportunities that they have here and the fact that they're not going to school on Saturday. They have great technology and they get to eat lunch. So there's, there's all these things.
And it's colorful. It's colorful, yes.
It's colorful. Yeah, that's true. Good things.
Okay, we had a lengthy budget discussion last meeting, not too lengthy, but we dove into it pretty well. Um, we have a continued discussion tonight as we move toward being ready to vote our budget and review it with the AdCom. Uh, so I don't know, Amy or Bill, who wants to kick this off?
Well, a- as you know, through our last discussion, um, we've gone through the process of, of reviewing by school level and by, um, in some cases actually by subject level, the, the needs for next year. We don't have a significant difference in our expense lines. Um, as we, we talked, most of the expense lines, uh, from a dollar to dollar point of view are the same. It's just that they've been manipulated within any department or within any building based on how we actually are using the money. And example is we used to have the Singari, um, you know, um, science program, which had three components to it, sat on one uh expense line. But in reality, uh, a lot of it was consumables and really belongs on another expense line. So we've modified the, the amounts for where they are being taken, but not the amounts overall. Singari has changed actually to another um program inspire, um, which has totally different things. So we're gonna have to probably learn how that kind of lays out coming up this year. But we think just by putting the money in the places we, we've used in the past, hopefully that's gonna be close. Other than that, the, uh, as we, we talked about the salary lines, um, relatively minor uh salary changes. We had obviously the, a few positions. Most of the position changes, uh, as we discussed, were directly around um individual or, or program-based needs for uh the special ed side of things. Um, we did have obviously the one um guidance uh position that we, you know, we're looking to expand upon uh based on student needs within um, um, the entire program, social position. So, but you know, again, we're looking at an overall budget increase of two point six uh four percent. We're looking at a, um, you know, a relatively stable staffing. And obviously, uh, as this is the last year of the current three-year contract, uh, the only contracts that will be up for next year, um, are the custodial and maintenance contracts. So, and obviously we've tried to recover for what we think we'll negotiate through on that. But the, um, overall, we think this is a fairly stable budget, um, considering where we have it. It is the smallest increase we've had over the years, but uh it's still a very large budget, obviously. It's thirty-four million uh and change, so. I didn't know if there was quite honestly, we had, you know, we've put a lot onto the committee. Obviously the subcommittee had also looked at it previously, but um I didn't know if there was any other questions that came up uh on the committee's side, um, that you'd need some further detail on or if there was any comments uh or concerns with any of the staffing positions.
I know I didn't have any and, and um I'll just offer a perspective maybe and then the rest of the committee can chime in with their own thoughts. But um, to me, Bill, we've done this so many times now and followed the same approach that unless there was a policy decision change, like we're going to expand services or we're going to dramatically change classroom size or we're gonna make a fee adjustment or something, with, without a, a policy change. To me, this year's budget is relatively straightforward. You know, you did a great job explaining it last meeting about, you know, the increased size and why and uh the fact that it is the smallest year-to-year increase that we've had in a number of years and um that we are maintaining the policies we've had. To me, it's fairly straightforward. I mean, I, I didn't come up with a lot more that I, you know, didn't understand or was confused by or, um, but the number is largely what it is, uh, based on, as you've pointed out many times, the amount of labor being uh the driver. Uh, I, I appreciate you reminding us that there are a couple of contracts up for renewal, but it's not a big bargaining unit or not.
Size as well.
Custodial and maintenance, so, uh, and you've budgeted for what you anticipate and you have history on how best to do that. So I just view this as fairly straightforward and not a lot of emotion or decision or debate in, in my perspective, but I don't know how everybody else feels.
Well, I can, before you do that, I, I think to your point, uh, Bruce, the, one of your key objectives has been the social-emotional area. And, and I think that's really, when we look at the staffing changes, that's really what this budget's about. You know, the social worker, um, again, um, you know, we see the need, obviously, um, not just on the students and the family issues that we're trying to, to deal with on a daily basis. We do have, um, you know, obviously some uh tools already in our, in our, our bag of tricks. But you know, obviously we're getting more and more into this, these issues that we need to address. And I think that's, you know, one of the things that we try to address in this. And I, and again, I'd be remiss if I didn't remind you that we are still looking at positions that we are cutting back on. So we've got two positions that we're cutting point, you know, two back on, on both the Spanish and the art. But that's based on population. You know, obviously as enrollments move, uh, we're gonna be fairly uh flat next year. Actually, I'm showing, this is the first year I'm showing an increase, but that's just based, as we discussed, on the amount of housing starts that are going on in town. But for all practical purposes, we're flat for next year. But we still, again, continue to look at how does our, our population break down through all the buildings? And you know, I think, again, try to thoughtfully reflect that within our budgets, not just pass it on because, you know, we could type of thing, so.
Well, to your point, I can sit here and say, you know, this is a pretty straightforward budget, but I'm not the one who's spending countless hours assembling it as your department is and then reviewing it as I'm sure Amy is. And so I, I, I don't mean to suggest the effort's not significant, but I guess what I appreciate, Bill, is I know that you and Amy and the rest of the team look at it very carefully. You know, and so, good, it's, it's, it is right and something we've said that we want to invest in the social-emotional learning area. And adding a, uh, an expanded guidance position to help us in that area uh is reasonable to me versus the alternative, which could say, okay, we, you know, we've got all these needs in the district and we're just, this is what it's gonna take, we just have to add all this. And you know, no, you don't do that. So we're gonna add one this year. We're able to offset that by a couple of position removals and we'll, you know, take a very balanced and careful and thoughtful approach as we do every year. So it just, you know, makes, just like having Amy and Allison be able to come along makes that side of our job easy as a committee, so does your budget management. So it just doesn't result in a lot of questions that I have. But how, how's everybody else feel?
Well, I, I mean, I agree with what you said and I certainly agree with everything that Mr. Yukna said. Um, you know, Marilyn and I sat down with Debbie and Amy and, and Bill uh in early December and went through it in, in great, went through the budget in great detail. I, I, um, it's, I echo what you say as far as the thoughtful, deliberate approach. When you look at the line, line by line and the, the, um, the thought that goes into where the expenses are allocated, I don't even know if that's the right accounting word, but we're, just, it is so thoughtfully prepared and every single thing is looked at within the budget. We could spend days at this table going through it. It is that detailed, it is that scrutinized. Um, and it's just a, a tremendous job by our, our school business administrator and by the principals and the, the building staff, you know, who turn in their budgets to bill. Each school's budget and the departments at the high school, the department heads do their different budgets. So it's, it's a very, very thorough um compilation of data. And I, what I found most helpful this time around is the um staff analysis and class size analysis and um the, the, the data that was just broken down really helps understand the totality of the budget. But I don't have any questions. I, I think it is really truly, it's all laid out in front of us. It is a big budget, it's a big number, but I think it is focused on student needs um within this district and it is a budget that is designed to provide our kids in Foxborough an excellent education. And I think that's, I know that's what I want sitting at this table. I'm not gonna speak for everybody else, but I think I, I could guess.
That's our goal.
Well, I think the other thing we try to do every year, you know, that-
Right.
I'm, I'm sitting here thinking in my mind, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, right? Which uh I've said before at this table, but, but you know, the, the group I worry about a little bit that we think about around this time of year, every year are the seniors. And, um, you know, therefore we try to maintain a very responsible budget and not spend uh exorbitantly or extravagantly. But this, you know, this brings me back to the point about the policy, right? We haven't said at this table this year that we're gonna expand programs. Uh, that's not our goal.
And we haven't.
And we haven't.
Nope.
We, we are not going to dramatically increase services. You know, what we're trying to do is maintain a, a budget with level service of right where we are. And the fact that we can do it and go up only the two percent year-to-year, I think is responsible. And, and this whole process began this year with um Randy Scollins presenting to the selectmen and the school committee and talking about what a good financial position we are in right now. So that gives me a little confidence that, uh, that we're staying within uh an area that is gonna be comfortable for the town going forward. So I do, I do think we, we try to be smart, we try to balance the, the goal of the, the parents and the students with the needs of the rest of the community within Foxborough. And I think that's the fine balance we always strive to achieve.
Absolutely.
I'm doing a lot of talking, other thoughts?
Yeah, I don't mean to nitpick on this, but back to the athletic uniforms that we talked about last time. I understand the pre, the goal is that every three years, the teams would be getting new uniforms.
I believe it's every four years.
Every four years, okay. Is that price part of, do we have a contract with the uniform company?
Yeah.
Like Adidas or Nike?
Yeah, we looked at that last summer and to be honest with you, um, first of all, you, you're committing to a lot of different things as far as kind of branding of, of their product uh throughout your school district. But when we looked at the discounts and being locked into only one brand for all sports, we saw some real negatives and, and there wasn't a, there wasn't a price value, which was kind of surprising to us, cause we looked at, if we went out to four or five different, um, you know, branding units and said, okay, basketball, we can get a better price to work with these uniforms and the quality is, is what we want. Football, this, this company does much better uh than the other. We had that freedom. If you get into a branding relationship, basically what you're saying is you're not going to buy from any of these other groups. And it does, so therefore in, in effect, it costs you because now you're kind of locked in and you're locked in for a period of time. And my opinion a- as a taxpayer, as well as being in the budget side of things is, I don't typically like purchasing agreements that lock me into a sole vendor. And I lose my capability of bidding against others. I will do it on service contracts, cause those are value-based and, and it's labor-based. So obviously I know those are gonna go up over time. So trying to lock those down is a good thing. But I think Rich Cormier did, did a great job, uh, because I challenged him with that same thing. It's like, you know, aren't we better off if we go with a company? And, and he went out and he had to do this, the, the research on the whole process. And we both sat down and ba- basically said for the, what we could see as a very, very insignificant value in the first year, we thought we were kind of locking ourselves in, um, and potentially having problems going down the road.
So the, the savings isn't, isn't saving?
No, no, it wasn't at all. I mean, they, they give you the first year discount, it's a pretty decent discount to get you in.
Why are you in?
But they tell you right in front, the second, third year discount. It's, it's just not there. So, and, and again, you're not gonna be able to buy everything in the first year. So you're gonna be in that rotation. So you get one quarter of that great discount.
Okay.
Nice to know.
Good question though, I mean, it's, you know, again, we- we tried to do that exact same thinking because when, when we, when Rich was tasked with coming up with how was he going to manage this whole process, um, it, it was the first way we went to look at it. Let's say, you know, let's go out and get somebody else to just give us a better price.
Be easy if they have to.
Right. Absolutely. No, absolutely. What do you got for football? Type of thing, so.
Other comments or questions? Okay. I think we're comfortable, Bill, with where we stand today.
Job well done, sir.
No, I just think that, you know, overall, what is it, eighty-three percent of the budget is salaries. And so when we look at not, we're not talking about increasing programs. We're looking at services for our students and it's caseload-based. And it's state and federal mandated programs when we think about special education and English language learners. And those are the caselots. That's where we see some of the shifts, but we've also looked at where can we take away that are not needed to the point. And we looked at classes that have left, so we've, um, that have been reduced at the elementary level. So we look at our specialist schedule, like last year reducing wellness by point two. And really the fine detail that you're talking about, it goes down. We looked at every single schedule and, and um really making sure that we're meeting the needs of the students and that we're also responding to those state and federal mandates that we have to as far as services and caselots.
And, and to that point, you know, the ELL was a great example. Amy's research on, on really all the cases that we currently have, what does it take and do we have the staff to manage that? You know, I think from our perspective, a, a situation like that is one of the easiest ones to defend because it's, you have so many minutes in a day, a person that can only service so many kids within those minutes. And are we able to equal what the federal guidelines or state guidelines say you're supposed to? And if you're not in the ballpark, you know you got a problem. Obviously, you know, you have some leeway within that, but it's not like you can say, if I'm supposed to get forty minutes a day and I give ten, then I'm there. So I think that's, you know, again, when you look at the research, that's the type of changes we're making in this budget. It's not because we just wanna do it, it's because we really need to do it to meet the requirements.
Joe, did you have a question?
Yes, I'm, I'm Joe Garrity. I'm a student at Foxborough High School and um I was just wondering, Mr. Yukna, what positions did we say were cutting out for next year?
We have two positions uh on the elementary level, a point two art and a point two Spanish. Uh, and again, that's based on number of classes within the three schools.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe.
Good question, Joe.
Bill, I didn't, did I mean, I didn't mean to cut you off, did I cut you off?
No, the only other thing I was thinking about, and, and I know we talked about this at length, so I don't wanna dwell on it, but I think it's important that we kind of keep this out there. And that is the fact that um this budget wouldn't be even as big a change as it is if it wasn't for the reduction in state and federal grants.
Yeah.
Uh, which has been on an unfortunate, you know, trend over the last few years.
Downward trend.
Yeah. When I first got here, we were kind of cre- creeping up a little. It was nice, we had a little bit extra that we could do and some of the things. But it, it's been going down. It's not by, it's not due to our lack of trying to get these grants. We're still getting the grants that are available. A couple of them have just gone away point blank. And you know, things like the kindergarten grant itself was going away, which, you know, was a fifty thousand dollar hit type of thing. But when you look at overall, you know, that's costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars on an annual basis. In the last two years, we've lost nearly four hundred thousand dollars in grant revenue or revolving account revenue, which part of that is obviously the-
And it passed how many?
Two years.
Four hundred thousand dollars less in two years.
As the grant money's gone down, the mandates have gone down.
Right, exactly.
So Bill, how do you, how do you try to, I mean, it's only so much you can do, but what is your thought on how you manage that, right? If you're the public listening to that, you say, good gosh, you know, what's-
Well, I mean, we managed it in, in one case, um, title, uh, title one had a position tied to it, which obviously if we didn't have the funding, we didn't have the position. obviously if we didn't have the funding, we didn't have the position. So, you know, we were able to cut that back. That's not always the case. Like I said, you know, in some of these situations, it wasn't just nice things to have, it was things that we really depend on. So unfortunately, that does, you know, get back into the taxpayers' bracket of having to support those items. As far as revolving, obviously the town bought into the tuition-free kindergarten two years ago. This will be the third year of that, which, you know, we said would be an additional $90,000 a year. This is the first year that we aren't collecting any tuitions for that program, which used to be a couple hundred, $300,000 a year. We're going to, we're relying on $200,000 of what we had built up in that fund this year. We'll rely on $100,000 more next year, and then that revolving account basically would be exhausted as well. So it's working to the plan, but it still requires the taxpayers to believe in the plan and to support that additional $90,000 for the next two years to get us fully funded.
The good news is, at least from feedback that, you know, I get or absent of the feedback I get, I think the town's pretty happy with how things have been going. So, you know, we have other ways. We could do things differently if we ever got to that point with fees and that nature, but I only hear positive support or the vast majority of what I hear is positive support for how we are administering the budget. So I think they're pleased with these decisions that we're making from a policy standpoint. And the fact that we've lost these grants and lost these income sources and yet are only going up 2%, I think, again, speaks to your ability to manage the overall budget and find where you can take it from and where you can balance, so.
Well, and I think too, what was said earlier, this is a team approach. You have pretty much every administrator on the same page. So it's not the central office, it's, you know, the principals and, you know, department heads throughout the district know what we're trying to accomplish and understand what resources we, you know, feel we can depend on from the town. And it, to your point, is not an open spigot. So by having everybody on the same page, it's a heck of a lot easier to get through a budget process and to understand that, you know, some years we can do things and some years we can't. And it really depends on what's out there, so.
And we're fortunate, right? Because a lot of towns are having and are going to have very difficult decisions, even with the good economy right now. So, yeah, we're fortunate to everybody on the same page and have the town's support. So we always thank the community for their support of our public education and continue to feel fortunate that we're in Foxborough where it is supported and valued, so. Anything else? Okay, thanks, Bill. Thank you to our budget subcommittee, spending hours of their time.
Hours.
Yeah, these discussions at this table can be relatively short. Last week's last meetings wasn't as short, but I think it's because there's so many hours put in by so many people to lead up to these presentations that we just don't have a lot of questions.
I will add one other thing, though. We had a great conversation with the advisory committee, the five-member group this time, which is, I think, the largest. It's usually around four. And Bernie Dumont, who is actually the chairman of the board, is sitting on our committee as well, which is really nice. But I think it was a very thoughtful conversation. I think they're a very well-educated group relative to our public schools and to the town itself. They asked some very good questions. Ironically, I think maybe to your point, the numbers didn't scare them as much. What they were more interested in is what are we doing and how are we producing? And I think at the time, you know, Ms. Spinnall, she gave a great layout of exactly the testing that we had just gone through and how that ranks us against, you know, not only public schools but private schools and not only in the country, but obviously internationally. That was more important to them, I think, in the overall scheme of things than, you know, the 2.6% we're going up. It was, are you actually producing something for the increase or the money that you're getting from us?
Yeah, that's exactly the right question. Yeah, exactly. That's exactly the right question, right? What's the return on the investment? But a little practice in case parents are listening or watching who don't have high school students yet, I invite you to come to the high school and go outside the guidance office where we post stars every time one of our students gets into a school that isn't on the list yet. And the list of schools and the stars that go up is really, you know, one small sign, but I think a very positive sign of what the return on investment is. So it's a fun time. You start to hear, you know, from this point forward through the rest of the academic year, you know, look at all the stars, look at all the school names, look what good schools our kids are getting into. It's exciting. Okay, shall we segue to the capital improvement plan?
I actually thought I was going to have a couple guests with us, but maybe they got tied up.
Do you want to do donations first?
Yeah, why don't we?
Because we're running a little ahead, so.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so we have, I guess, three donations. We're so fortunate as a district to have these on almost every agenda lately, it seems.
I know.
We have Meditech offering a donation tonight, a Borough School gift account, and in addition to the Jerry Roy Scholarship Fund. Do you want to talk about that, Amy?
Sure. So the first one from Meditech is a company that's been in Foxborough for about three years and Natalie Devault from, she's a senior manager for administrative services there. They have a list of organizations that they donate to for the advancement of technology and technology instruction. And they are donating $10,000 as their company's contribution to the Foxborough Public Schools. And this is a donation that is very much appreciated by us and we're very excited to be on their list of donations and for them to recognize the work that we've been doing. The money is to be for a technology initiative and I don't think we'll have any problem finding a technology initiative there. So again, it's something that they've donated to us as part of their charitable contributions and we are very fortunate to be the recipient, to be able to use those funds for the advancement of technology and technology integration.
Is this the first donation we've had from Meditech in recent past?
Yes.
I mean, I'm not forgetting something, right?
No, this is the first.
Well, I have to tell you, I was so excited to see this in our package. I don't know if everybody knows Meditech, other than being here in town, but Meditech is a world-known healthcare information system manufacturer. I actually know Howard Messing personally, not through anything other than business contacts several years ago. But the fact that they're here, the fact that they're making a donation, adding us to their list, I am thrilled about. And it makes me think about reaching out to them, perhaps, Amy, and talking about what other partnerships we might have with them. This is a wonderful start.
Right.
That we're most thankful for.
It's a great, it's a conversation I would love to continue to have with them.
Yeah, so at some point, when you're ready, and I know you're still unpacking boxes, but at some point, I think we should reach out to Meditech and talk about expanding our partnership further. Healthcare information is such a big deal.
Right.
They've been around for quite a while. We have parents in the district who are Meditech employees, quite a few.
I was thinking.
This is a company that, you know, is a very impressive company and one that we should do more with.
Absolutely.
If they'd be willing, so. Anyway, that's my reaction.
I think Senior Project comes as a good example of something that they might be a great one, a resource for us to work with if they're so willing. I know we're always looking for, you know, good partners in that area, so now that they're starting to reach out, it'd be nice to see if we can reach out to them, too.
And they're in a lot of other communities, right? Here in Massachusetts, so we certainly can't claim them all to ourselves in Foxborough, but to the extent that they would enjoy working with us, we'd certainly enjoy working with them, so.
And maybe they would participate in our SEM Day that we have for our sixth grade students.
Yeah.
I don't know if they were on the list before, so that's something worth investigating.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the gift of $10,000 from Meditech for the use of advancement of technology and technology instruction with great appreciation.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Thank you very much, Meditech.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And then our second donation that we had was to the Borough School Gift Account from Teresa Mark Todd's family. It was for $2,500. Again, just supportive Foxborough families and community and very much appreciated for this donation that we received for the Borough School Gift Account.
This is another one, you know, that I got excited about because the Todd family, you know, they're a great family. They've had a lot of kids go through our schools.
Very active.
Very active, very smart people, very interesting technology that they're involved with, very giving of their time, involved with parent leaders in the past and so, very nice of the Todds to make this gift.
Sure is. You know what I thought when I saw this donation? I mean, aside from all of the above that was said, is the connection that we have as parents and families to our elementary schools? Because I know Teresa pretty well and I know how devoted she was as a Borough PTO mom, parent, and I feel the same way about the Taylor School and I know other parents who are IGO parents, but, you know, we talk a lot about our three schools and they have so many commonalities and wonderful, in wonderful ways, but we really do have that attachment to our school that our kids went to and our kids went to the Taylor and I feel that way. But this is just a very generous donation and really a wonderful thing for the Todd family to do.
I'd like to move to accept this check from Mark and Teresa Todd, the amount of 20,000, I'm sorry, 2,500 for the Borough School Gift Account.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
As far as mine, I know.
That's all right.
I don't know how I didn't get that out when I was talking.
Thank you, Mark and Teresa.
Yes, absolutely.
And then one that just came in, the Jerry Roy Scholarship Fund. Do you have a copy of that as well?
I do. And so Colin McDonald, this is a donation that is in the memory of Jerry Roy. So our department head, it was having art here with Kelly, so he was Kelly's department head before, and it's a donation of $250 by just, in his honor as a colleague and then working closely with his wife, Diane McDermott, and he wanted to make this donation in his honor to help keep his spirit alive.
Is this from him or from the Davis Companies?
It's from the McDonald's. It's a personal check from the McDonald's.
I'd like to move to accept the check for the amount of $250 from Colin McDonald for the Jerry Roy Scholarship Fund.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Unanimous, what a surprise. Thank you.
With gratitude for both the last two.
Thank you to Colin McDonald for this gift. I wish I knew Jerry Roy.
Oh, he was probably.
Another one that's close to my heart.
This one just keeps, this scholarship fund just keeps coming and coming.
It continues to grow and grow. It's wonderful.
Yeah, just as a point of reference, it's now at $16,673.
How much? $16,000?
Six seventy-three.
Plus this new addition.
No, that includes that new addition.
I believe he was here almost 30 years. It's a long time. He retired 2012. He supposedly retired 2011.
I did know.
Retired in 2012. He had a.
Just didn't know him well.
A lot of people don't know, if you're not in the art department, you don't know that whole hallway.
Yeah.
It's like the hidden back hallway.
It's true. Nice way to keep his memory alive.
Isn't that fabulous? And what about these two?
Those are just thank you letters.
Oh, I didn't read it, sorry.
That's okay.
We approved those last time.
All right, I wasn't here. I was, I was with broken foot, right?
Bill, with our music team having walked in, are you ready to go on the other or you want to do other matters first?
Nope, we're good.
All right. We were running early. It's our fault. We're very efficient tonight.
Yeah. So with the CIP program, as you know, we kind of have four, come on up, you can come up. We have four, what I call kind of recurring requests on an annual basis. The computer hardware, software, network upgrades at $190,000. You know, again, this supports not only the schools, but also supports part of the town's systems. The town puts some money in, but obviously we're running most of the networks out of the school and out of the police station. We have the need for, to replace two full-size buses and another minibus, which is a 27 to 35 passenger, depending on which branding we get, and then our copier replacement. So those are the four kind of annual CIP budget items that we have. We have two other items. One is going to be the first showing of it and that's why Kami's here to help explain a little bit more for us. But, and I was working for a while with the music department, trying to get a little bit better handle on the entire equipment side of things, just because we do have a very significant investment there. But also, I've been here going on seven years now. I've never seen anything really spent on equipment, so I knew most of the equipment is aging. And while we do spend money on trying to do some repairs and stuff, we haven't really spent money on investing into the equipment itself and replacing things that needed to be. So Kami has actually taken on with her department the challenge of going through the equipment and really determining, you know, what needed to be replaced and upgraded at this point. I will say at this, at this point, this is going to be one area of the band equipment. We probably won't be looking at anything for the next year or two, but then we will have probably another grouping of equipment that, again, as they go through all of it and determine what is, you know, really at its useful life. As you'll see in Kami's notes, most of this equipment that we're talking about is 15 years old. Obviously, it's been out there, you know, with the students. I think they've taken good care of it, but it's, you know, like anything, it doesn't last forever. So I think I'll turn it over to Kami and they can both explain what you are presenting and why. There is one new item, which is an addition to the program, but again, I'd rather have Kami kind of describe why.
Sure. So I just want to introduce, this is Bobby Glynn. He's one of our middle school band directors and music educators, but I also brought him as well because he is a percussion specialist. So he helped write up this report along with Donald Albro. So what we're requesting is coming from informed sources, which we're really lucky to have. So we're essentially looking to replace our entire drum line, which you see for the marching band, hasn't been touched for 15 years in terms of total replacement. And we're also looking to add a five octave marimba to our program here at the high school. Currently, we have, do we have one already?
No.
We don't have a full five octave marimba. The one that we're using currently or had been using for several years was actually Mr. Albro's own personal instrument that he was allowing the school to use, so.
That was nice of him.
Yes. So with the sort of expansion of our percussion curriculum and developing, this is Mr. Albro, welcome.
Donnie, we were just thanking you for lending us your personal equipment for school use.
So, you know, it would be used on a regular basis just to support the needs of our growing percussion curriculum. To backtrack to the drum line itself, we've been sort of piecing it together and over the years, but at this point, it's really, we don't think that it's worth the time and energy to invest parts for equipment that really is failing. And we're hoping that the new and upgraded equipment will also, it will sound better, it will look better, and then most importantly, really be more ergonomically better for the students when we go to, for them to carry it. So essentially being a safer product for them to use. Do you have any questions for me about that?
Go ahead, Chris.
I believe these are different quotes from three different companies.
Yeah.
Do you know which company you prefer? Is one quality better than the other?
Unfortunately, and they may have a preference, but unfortunately, because you have to go out to bid on this, it's really a low bid scenario unless you can disqualify equipment because of a real technical issue. So we may be fortunate in that they may get the one that they want because they like the quality of the product, but again, it's a whole bidding process. They do have three bids in hand right now, but obviously, you know, when we go out, we'll take a good look at it. Part of it will also have to do with what we do with the.
All this equipment come from one?
Yes.
Defender, yes.
So the Steve Weiss one is $22,482.75. Is there another piece to it to bring it to 26?
No, I put in 26,000, to be honest with you, because while this, I think this list No, we, I put in twenty-six thousand, to be honest with you, because while this, I think this list is fairly extensive, we always know when we go out to bid, you know, you tweak it a little bit, and it's easier to leave a few dollars on the table and give it back to the town than it is to say we're, you know, three or four thousand short. So, these are quotes that are, you know, preliminary at this point. They're obviously not based on going out to bid, so.
Steve Weiss is the preferred one as well?
Bobby and Donnie, how long should we expect percussion equipment to last? I see where the current stuff Kami says is about fifteen years old roughly. I mean, is that, is that a good life? Is that typical, is it?
I think that's a good life for the quality of that equipment when it was new, the stuff that we have now. Not to mention when you see what it gets put through, both the number of students that have access to that equipment and played on it, and the weather, quite frankly, that that equipment is exposed to every year, many times a year.
You have two band parents here, the five of us, so we've seen it. We've all seen it, all five of us have seen it.
And it's certainly possible to extend the life as we do, just by properly maintaining it and it being taken care of, which I think all of our music equipment.
Well, that's why it's lasted the fifteen years with all the extremes.
Right.
That it's weathered and been handled.
And to put it into perspective, professional drum corps and even like highly, highly competitive high school drum programs, I would say their equipment lasts a year or two.
They replace it every year.
Because they just do that. But we are able to get such a longevity out of it because we, the students are taking care of it. We have staff that's knowledgeable and able to replace it, and we're, we think that we're purchasing items here that are going to be of high quality and really going to last. So, we would hope to get another fifteen out of this.
Do you think new equipment nowadays, as I'm saying, just like you look at electronics, something from a hundred years ago would last twenty-five years, now they last like two years. Do they have any kind of quality, you know?
I don't think we can put a number on it.
No, can they? Can they company, like why you saw whoever?
Is there a warranty?
Any kind of?
On any of it?
I'm sure there's a standard manufacturer, like, you know, covers a malfunction wood or something, but in general, if something goes, we replace. It's typical to replace drum heads and rims and things like that, which is factored into our, you know, our budget that we just do, just like we would maintain other instruments. But this is just sort of purchasing the whole shell and unit and everything, and then we will need to maintain them as we go along, which will then, you know, make the life of the instrument last longer. Does that make sense?
I guess what I'm asking, like usually if you buy something, they'll say, you know, expected life off something, does that come with?
I don't think that's like a.
I'm not familiar with percussion, you guys.
I think those particular pieces of equipment are used in such a versatile manner.
Right, and we're in the Northeast, and we've got our issues.
Right, the company, you know, no company is going to put any sort of reasonable guarantee like that, just because they don't know how it's going to be used.
I think to Kami's point, but most of them would have a free of manufacturer's defect.
Right.
So, obviously, if that's the problem, that's the problem. You know, Donnie, when you talked about, you know, Weiss music, what's the, is that the advantage of the company or the equipment?
The equipment we got quoted for was identical.
Okay.
So, it's not, it's not an issue of the product.
Manufacturer, okay.
And they're all fine, those vendors are all fine. Just Steve Weiss is probably the oldest and most reputable of all those vendors.
Have you guys used them in the past?
Yeah, I've been, I've been buying stuff from them since I was sixteen.
Okay.
Yeah, when you ask a percussionist, who do you go to, that's generally who they say.
I said they are the little bit.
Great name.
One of the other things, and obviously, I'll leave it up to the music department to determine, but the equipment that we have, it's either got to be, if we're going to let it go, it's either going to go in a trade, which is sometimes the simplest, or go out to bid because it is taxpayers' money. So, it's not something we can just get rid of, unless it's just total crap. You know, quite honestly, if it is, then it goes in the dumpster. But if there's any value left to the equipment itself, then there's a process that we have to do to get rid of it. So, just like we do with anything else, just so that you know, that's, we'll obviously offer to them and see if they have any value to give to us, and if they don't, then we'll go the other route. And if any of the equipment is worth keeping as a backup for anything, then obviously, I would assume that we could do that as well.
I don't personally have any qualms supporting this whatsoever. I know how hard our music staff works, countless hours, all sorts of weather, supporting our students and our instruments and our programs, which are world-renowned. So, my only question, Bill, would be, and I probably shouldn't answer this, why CIP? Why ask for the money in CIP versus our traditional budget?
It's borderline, typically, it's a twenty-five thousand dollar requirement. Anything over twenty-five thousand, you'd go through the CIP process. And again, I, you know, when we're done tweaking this whole thing, I wouldn't be surprised if we end up right in that number. So, rather than be, you know, playing with the number and saying we're going to try to keep it under, I would rather be just upfront that this is what we're going to do.
I think that's a good reason. Any other questions, or can we let Kami and Bobby and Donnie go?
If there are no more questions, I don't want to let them go yet.
Okay, go ahead, Debbie.
Thank you for setting such a lovely tone with your beautiful music. When we walked into Debbie's party the other night, you just, you had the bar already set very high for the whole evening.
Thank you. That was fun for us.
It was so nice to walk into. I didn't want you to stop. I'd have had you anytime over the DJ, but that's just my personal preference. And then also, I want to wish you lots of luck on the nineteenth with your Ellington recording, and there are going to be no bells after two o'clock.
Or alarms or anything.
Isn't that moved up a little bit? Isn't the recording a little bit later, more towards the end of January, beginning of February somewhere?
We have to go by what Ellington's dates are, so, and then when Peter Katrimas is available. So, we sort of have this window that's like pretty narrow.
Well, I wanted to say my personal thanks. You did a lovely job, and good luck with that.
And I also echoed to the Music Association your gratitude that you mentioned at the party as well. I just saw them, so.
Joe, was your question for Ms. Tendaldi and her team? Okay, go ahead.
What's this, do you call it a mar?
A marimba.
A marimba, so what do you guys use the marimbas for?
It's like that really large xylophone. You ever see us using it up in the front of the marching band? Up on the track, that instrument.
It's like the stand, where you stand, right?
You stand to play it.
Yeah.
It looks like a xylophone, which has like the bars, but it's really big and long.
We use the mallets to play.
Yep.
So, you guys use that for, to improve the instruction, huh?
Oh, absolutely. It'll allow our students to play more music and have access to more songs, and it'll be more exciting for them.
Good question, Joe.
Thank you.
Do you guys use one, right?
Yes, smaller ones.
They steal his, Mr. Albro.
I just, I have no questions. I completely support this. I have a comment, just again, this just shows the level of detail that our department heads and our people put into their requests. They drill down into the, you know, most finite detail to give us, and everything is deliberate and thoughtful. And also, this might be a good time to ask about the senior district festivals that just went, took place, and we had many students participate, and I heard wonderful things, and so, we want to continue to keep that, that level of excellence going with the right equipment, so I agree with that.
Yeah, we had thirty-two students accepted, which was the highest number we've had in Foxborough, and we were also very successful with our junior students, but we're just really excited that the students are taking that risk and putting themselves out there for that process. And then, you know, whether they get in or not, that's sort of the extra bonus of it, but we're really excited that they're doing this and taking on that opportunity, and then getting to have the experience of the festival. So, thank you.
Fantastic. Well, thank you for bringing this one.
Okay, thanks for coming out, you guys.
Thank you.
The last item, we discussed at length last year, obviously, it is the completion of the campus at Foxborough relative to the turf field with the addition of an eight-lane track, bleachers, and a press box. As you know, we've got the funding to do the concession stand, and I don't, didn't have it on this, I should have brought you a copy, but we do have our final design completed, so I'll bring that to the next school committee meeting so you can see it. I think the architects did a very good job with what, you know, we were going to accomplish there. Again, full concession stand, ticket booth, storage for the boosters, clubs within the concession area, separate for each of the groups that are at a season, and then two fairly large bathroom facilities, as well as separate individual bathrooms for, you know, changing tables and stuff like that. So, came up very, very nice. I would like to hold off, I mean, obviously, with the weather where it is now, we're not going to go rushing to put anything in the ground, but, you know, depending on how this starts to move forward, I'd like to hold off a little bit because if this looks like it's going to get some support, I would love to tag the three projects together, have only one site contractor, and coordinate it all that way. But if it's not, then we will go forward with concession stand this spring, so.
It feels like that part of the project, Bill, slipped a little, but I guess I thought that was going to happen sooner.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, it took, between some of the other projects that were going on in town, it just took a little bit more focus than we had on it. That's when we finally got the architectural firm, it kind of started moving along very well, but we went through a number of renditions. We actually looked at about a half a dozen different schools' concession stands to make sure that we were not missing something. So, yes, I actually wished it had been done for this last fall, but, you know, again, one way or another, we'll be ready for next fall, and, you know, it will take probably the spring timeframe. If we start in the spring, it'll take all the spring, so we might be ready for the summer if we go that route. But again, if you can, if you can use the same site contractor to do everything, then you know the track's in the right place, you know the concession stands in the right place, because they're going to be close.
Yeah, it's going to be tight.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, I see the benefit of that. I also am anxious to see us make progress just because there are so many people who are using that space, and so many people like the turf field. I think the more we can put up, even if we have to do it piecemeal, I think it's important to show the progress. But that explains the benefit of waiting. Chris, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just when we had our meeting with the selectmen and Randy and all of them, there was one member of the board of selectmen that was, kept trying to push this out of CIP and make it a different item at town meeting?
No, she was trying to, I believe, make it into a fundraiser.
Okay.
And I think, while I appreciate that, I think the school department on a number of times has done fundraising for things like we did at the IGO playground, which, you know, in effect, nearly eighty percent of that was raised through outside resources versus town resources. You know, we've done that on other field projects. We raised around twenty-one thousand dollars for the concession stand, but I think Debbie kind of eloquently put it that, you know, you can only push so much just on donations, and a project of this scale, really, just like we wouldn't, you know, look to have a science wing or something else done through donations, this is really a campus issue. This is, this is a facilities issue, and it would take us a significant period of time to raise one point one million dollars, number one. And number two, you know, in that timeframe, the turf field continues to be used and worn, and one of our reasons for wanting all of this done is to potentially, you know, bring in some money towards helping that turf replacement when it has to be done. So, but the other four members, I think, were very supportive of the fact that the project is what it is. I mean, as far as.
They were realistic about it.
The scope of it, so.
Yeah, so I remember last year, we tried to get on it in the CIP, and then we didn't push forward. I just want to make sure it goes to town meeting in one form or the other this year, so we can, so people get to vote on it.
So, I think, I think what happened, well, what's interesting in the process, and the school committee, I guess, should understand this, maybe you don't, the CIP process is, the CIP committee itself only needs to review an article. They don't need to accept it for you to push it to still be on town meeting.
Right.
Obviously, we've always been on a very cooperative basis, but their charter is strictly that they have reviewed. If they have not reviewed something, it can't go to town meeting, okay? But the, but the reality here is, last year, with a number of competing resource needs, you know, one of them being the Burl School, which, you know, at seven hundred thousand was a fairly large request as well, the resources just weren't there to meet what all the other departments needed as well. Randy has given kind of a signal that, based on the needs that he's seen from other departments, as well as, you know, what our department requests were, that he believes there is enough funding within that, you know, fund this year to be able to manage this. Again, it just, it really will take the parents and taxpayers to come out and say they want to support it. But that Saturday meeting.
It's in March?
March, yeah. You know, it's an open meeting in which the group gets together to go down the list, and again, again, they go down based on how much money they have. So, they prioritize the list, and depends on how high this comes up on the priority list.
But even if they review it, don't favor it, we can still push forward.
You can still push to have it be a warrant article item. You know, again, I think we've tried never to do that. We always try to be within the consistency, but, you know, again, I think at some point, the taxpayers will have to make a decision whether or not they believe in this.
And like you said, we want people using it so we can get the money.
Right.
Well, can I?
Sure.
I just want to interject that, when we received the original two hundred thousand dollar grant from the NFL, it was for a community field. It was not for the schools.
Absolutely.
For school purpose. It was for a community field, and, I mean, through, you know, when Jim Devellis came here with Turfs Up and we discussed it, this was the ideal location for it within the community. So, I think if we can get the CIP committee to support the project, it would be the best thing for the community as a whole. I mean, certainly, it's a huge benefit to the high school and our school department, and I want to see it go through. But I don't want to lose the focus that originally was a community field.
Oh, it still is.
It was and is.
I think you've actually raised two very good points. One's on the donation side. Jim's Devellis, this group, spent a few years.
Oh, yeah.
Doing a lot of fundraising, and they came up with sixty-five thousand, which was great.
Yeah.
But sixty-five thousand is a long way from one point one million dollars. Deb and another group of people did a similar type of fundraising, which took nearly a whole year, and they came up with twenty-one thousand. So, maybe twenty years from now, we would have one point one million at those type of levels, but it doesn't get us to our end result. The other side, to your point on the community side, is at least fifty percent of that field use is community. So, while we have it after school for our athletic teams, every night and every weekend, all through the summer, those, that field is used. So.
By the community.
By the community, by youth sports, by, you know, other organizations that are doing things. So, it's, it is in constant use and not just for the schools.
And not just summer, you said summer, spring, summer, fall.
No, I said all through the summer too, yes.
Yeah, oh, oh.
Yeah, all, every year.
So, we literally are going from, the beauty of the field for us on the school side is, and as we saw last year, when we had snow and people couldn't get out, we had our turf fields cleared, and we were actually able to have the athletics out on that. It was the only place you could go. Everything else was mud. But that, that was true also for the youth sports.
Right.
Because otherwise, they had no place to go either. So, they came on our heels every night. Right after our teams left, they came out and went out, and the lights went out, you know, at ten o'clock at night. So, and we ran through that whole process, and that happened from, you know, the end of March right through the end of December, basically, or middle of December at least.
Did the community get priority over the field instead of rentals?
Oh, instead of rentals. The, yes, the priority in the agreement is basically, you know, the school sports first, and like I said, most of that's directly after school, so it's not in conflict unless there's a game. Then it's youth sports within the town, and then it goes out to rental. So, rental is the lowest level, as much as we'd like to rent it, obviously, but the taxpayers have paid for this to be used by the town itself too, so that's the main purpose.
There's also the safety factor. We can't forget that part when we're talking about kids having to, you know, go over and leave the campus and not being on campus. So, I think that's an important part to remember too, by having our kids being able to have that full campus and to stay right here.
I was watching our track students running in the street today to avoid the icy snow, snow sidewalks in the snow, and, yeah, thinking of the exact same thing. It's a huge safety.
And the parking lot when you're picking up the kids.
And the parking lot when you're sitting there waiting for your Harnesville student to come out, and you see all the high schoolers coming in, driving.
Oh, they used to run around this, this, years ago, around this parking lot.
They still do.
They still do.
They still do.
It's a skitter.
So, I agree. I think the safety issue is huge. Are there any other towns that have this dichotomy of campus?
Yeah, there are other towns that have their football fields away from the school, but the majority of the ones that we play in the league with are on their own campuses. So, I believe North Attleboro, as an example, has a separate field.
But, and I live in that town, there's been a huge movement to get a turf field for a multitude of reasons, but primarily so that they can have the field on their campus. And Foxborough beats us every year on lacrosse because you have way, well, that's not the only reason, but you also have a lot of opportunity to be on your field. We had to forfeit home field advantage several times last year because they just couldn't play in the mud. So, it's a nice thing to have, yes.
And then, if this goes through, if we're trying to bring all the sports teams and everything here, the only thing we would need to do is locker rooms?
Well, we have locker rooms at the IGO right now. Is it, it's a potential option. Well, we have locker rooms at the IGO right now. It's a potential option down the road. If the, you know, community feels, and that they're, you know, so inclined that we could actually add, you know, locker rooms off the side of the building here. This building is actually ideally set up off where its locker rooms currently are to expand. So that's, you know, we have the space, we have the ability, so that's really not the issue. It's, it will be more of a, you know, financial issue at the time. But at least our locker room isn't that far away, and a visiting team could use the existing locker rooms here. So we have the capabilities. It may not be ideal, but right now, the Hearn's not ideal either, so for either team.
Okay. Any other CIP comments, Bill, in general?
No, you know, again, as you know, as with our budget, we look at this with the town before we even kind of come out. So, I mean, I wouldn't come out with something that I didn't think the town had the ability to deal with, because I'm not looking to poke anybody in the eye with it. I really want something that's supportable, and I think from your, you know, perspective of what you've been supporting, this is really something that just kind of follows right along, and kind of like the Borough, you know, if we didn't get it the first two years with the MSBA, we got it the third year. Well, you know, you don't stop, you just keep trying to get it and do the right thing for the kids, so.
I think from an overall standpoint, if you look at this list, it's a predictable list, you know, based on what we've been asking for the last few years, what you've been finding approval for the last few years. There's no real surprises here. So I'm very comfortable with it. Do you anticipate it changing at all?
No, actually, I don't. You know, we have, you know, if you walk in my office, you'll see there's a list on my whiteboard of other issues within the district that will need to be addressed. I don't think any of them are so significant that they should be on this list as a requirement. As in the past, obviously, if we're fortunate enough to have any funds available at the end, I would look to knock some of those off the list. They are all facilities-related issues based on age or just needs, so I think we'd stay consistent with that. And again, you know, with a little luck, I'd get the worst of it off the list, but I think we've been making great headway there, too. So, no, I think this is really, unless you guys decide something isn't, or you want to add something, but this would be my recommendation at this point.
I don't know if the committee feels comfortable doing this yet, but would you like a vote of approval on this now, or would you like us to hold?
No, typically, what we would do is have this approved at the, you know, either at the same time as you do the regular budget, although we have a little bit more time on this. You don't have the same time constraints that you have on the annual budget, which has to be done before the end of the month.
Okay, very good.
I'd like you to at least think about it. Like I said, if there's anything else that you think of or issues, and, you know, we can have another discussion next meeting.
Well, I don't anticipate getting feedback from the community, but by holding on it, if anyone has any reaction to tonight's meeting, they can, they can come to the next meeting, or they can contact any of the committee members. Okay, thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Dave.
Other matters? Debbie?
Mentioning global outreach, there is a meeting tomorrow night, the 9th, Tuesday, for the French Exchange, and they will be leaving on the 13th of February to complete the cycle for this year, which is always very exciting. And I just wish everybody a happy, healthy, productive New Year.
Nice. Thank you. Tina?
I had a couple things. I saw, and I won't keep us too long, I promise. I saw on the Foxborough BIT Auction Facebook page that the final numbers for the BIT auction were in, and each school, each school is going to receive $20,433.23. That's phenomenal. That may actually be the, I don't know.
No, we got 62 or something one year when I was at Borough. We got 62,000 one year, so maybe it's been a long time since we've had that.
That's pretty close then, but that's phenomenal.
Can you do that again, please?
It said $20,433.23 was on Facebook.
And to be clear, that's each PTO.
Each PTO. Each PTO will receive it. So, you know, well over $60,000. So it's a tremendous effort combined by all three PTOs to put that together.
That's awesome. So much fun, too.
It's, I know, I missed it this year. I was double booked that night, and I love going. It's always, always a great time.
So it's, how many years for the turf field? I mean, for the, that, how many years we do this?
Well, the funds raised from the BIT go to programming at the elementary schools, to extra special programming, you know, that they wouldn't otherwise have the opportunity to do. I was a PTO vice president one year, and in charge of booking all those programs. So it's just really a great thing. I wanted to mention that and thank this year's BIT auction chairs, and wish the next year's chairs good luck, because they've got a pretty high bar to meet. Tonight was a Step Up concert for the 8th grade choir, so, you know, we heard from our music department. I wanted to say congratulations to the Varsity and JV basketball team. I had a proud mom moment, getting to travel to Florida to see them play in Disney World. And they really, the kids really represented Foxborough very well, both on and off the court. I have to give John Gibbs so many kudos for organizing the trip. I know the boosters put together a great fundraising campaign to support the trip, but he and his three assistant coaches took 24 kids to Disney World, and really, it was a great experience for everybody. It was a team bonding experience, and really, it went as well as you could possibly have a trip go. So thank you to Coach Gibbs, and congratulations to all the boys. The Varsity actually won their championship in their bracket, and the JV team won two out of three games. So it was a very successful trip all around, and I know I'm very grateful that, you know, my son was participating, so. It was fun. My last thing is, this came in the mail, I'm sure everybody saw it, the Partners in Patriotism newsletter, and every single page of this newsletter, there is something that the Partners in Patriotism, the Craft Group, and the Patriots are doing to support Foxborough Public Schools or our students personally, including Debbie. The French Exchange students visited Gillette Stadium, but it came in yesterday's mail or the day before.
1982, we started that. Yay. You're on the field with them, Bev? You didn't join that?
No.
Tina, you have to tell her.
I think so. Anyway, so thank you to the Craft Group. It's just a wonderful, we're so, we really are fortunate to have the Craft Group as a great community partner, and thank you to all of the Foxborough residents who serve on the PIP Grant Committee, because that's not a small amount of time either, and they really sift through all of the various requests that come in and give them a lot of thought. So we are very lucky. I'm not going to go through every single one, but trust me, there is a lot of good things that are coming from the Partners in Patriotism to, that are flowing to our schools. So thank you for that. That's it, that's all I have.
Amy?
A couple things I had written down, you mentioned. I was really excited, thinking about John Gibbs when he came, what was it, a year and a half ago before the committee and all of the planning, and to see the success that they had. I thought that was really exciting. And then just again, I wanted to personally thank all of you for your support in moving into this new role as well. So it is exciting to start a new year, but to also know that the support that I've had, you've each reached out to me individually to be there as a support, and I just really appreciate it, and the community and the teachers as well. So, but thank you to all of you for your support.
You're welcome. You'll do great things. Allison, anything under other matters?
Well, today, I really enjoyed walking around our classrooms after having two snow days and a very abbreviated week last week, to see the learning that was happening. And I took a bunch of pictures that I will tweet when I get home, but I was really impressed to see how happy the kids were to be back in our schools, which said a lot to me about what we offer here. And I met a child in the store last week. I was getting the balloons for Debbie's party, and I heard a little girl counting the balloons, and her mom was having a conversation, and they said, yes, we use math every day. They weren't talking to me, but I had to ask, what school do you go to? And she's a kindergartner at the Taylor School. So I was able to go visit her today, and now she'll only know me as Mrs. Marshmallow, the balloon lady, but that's okay, because now that's all she needs to know for now. Someday, she'll know that I've just had a big jump, and all of a sudden, I'm the assistant superintendent. So thank you all for welcoming me, because it was fun to be in kindergarten and just feel like one of the kids today.
Nice.
Yes.
I just can't wait till you, Dr. Marshmallow.
Yes, me neither, to be honest.
Anything else?
No, that's it. Just thank you all. This was a great, it's already been a couple of days of heavy-duty learning, but it's great for having my brain turned on and be here with all of you, so thank you.
You're a good learner.
We're not going to let up for a little while either.
Oh, it's good. I like it like that. It's good.
Chris?
I'm good.
Marilyn?
I just want to talk about DECA. DECA is our business planning club. I don't know how, we don't, some schools have them as part of their curriculum or an after-school program, which is King Philip does, so they usually win every year. But we have a very strong DECA team that started at the end of 2015, I believe. It was, Mackenzie Anderson had brought it to our school, and those 70 kids had joined. We have been competing every year and very successfully against other teams in the district. And our first competition is going to be this Wednesday and Thursday under the direction of Mr. McCabe. And it's going to be at the Holiday Inn in Mansfield. And if anyone wants to volunteer, just reach out to me or Mr. McCabe. I'll be helping out on Wednesday with the...
This coming Wednesday?
Yeah, it's Wednesday and Thursday. I think he needs people on Thursday. I have to do the sit-down one, the written one, so he's going to need some people for the stand-up presentation ones. So if anyone's available, he's looking for volunteers, but I will fill you in, let you know how they do. I'm very excited. It's grown, we're very competitive now, and he's done a great job of this.
I mean...
It's a fabulous thing to watch.
I mean, they've gone from there to there in such a short time.
The kids went to the Nationals last year, which is really impressive.
They went the year before, too, because they went to Tennessee.
Oh, that's right.
Because Matthew was part of that group. And actually, they met Debbie's nephew. They were saying it was too funny. Remember Coniff and Matthew were sitting in here?
Right.
And they had met Debbie's Penelope's nephew, and he said he was so impressed by the Foxborough team, and there was two really funny kids there, and those two turned beet red in the audience. So, yeah, we've done really, really great things with it, and I hope it keeps on growing. It's a great thing that they do in college level, and I've actually volunteered to judge at the Bentley before, because my husband used to go there. And Matthew just competed in the Northeastern one and won the first inaugural one, so, yeah. So he's got good foundation here. Again, our Foxborough school system, so.
Can I do one more quick little thing? The minute, the minute I hung up my phone from the robo-call, there's no school Friday, I texted Amy, but not Debbie's party, right? That's still on. I immediately received the response, yeah. The minute I texted her.
And I want to congratulate you for successfully getting through your first snowstorm. It was an easy call, though, so we need you to have a challenging one.
I'm good with warmer days. The temperatures are rising at the end of the week.
Yeah, up to 50.
Well, some people put their shorts on today. It was such a relief, sub-zero weather.
Marilyn, anything else?
That's it. That's all I've got for you.
I'm good.
Janet?
All set, thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to move that we...
The only thing I was going to say real quick, no school a week from today. Martin Luther King, no school Monday.
Is Friday, is that the end or is it?
No, that's not until January 26th.
Okay.
So no school Monday.
Ignore me.
And finally, rumor has it, you may have set a Massachusetts superintendent, assistant superintendent record.
What? Why?
Fastest snow days in earliest part of your term. It has led to an all-time popularity spike.
Wow.
I don't know if you're aware of this.
Who knew?
Good to know.
I'm joking. What was that motion you wanted to make, Debbie?
That we conclude our meeting, please, to be a jerk.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.